I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for being here tonight. Our esteemed president is online, but I'll be acting as the voice. Feel free to chime in anytime, Kim. We have, yes, you're welcome. We have seven of our nine here. Brandon is coming. Uh, we know he's gonna be here a little late. Any, anything about Daryl? Kim, that you know?
I have not heard from Daryl, no.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, everything has been properly noted. Thank you, Kate. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Friner for the superintendent's report.
This evening, we have a group of students here to perform for the board. Make it away.
Are you a, a baritone, or where, where do you fit into this? Alright, so this is the Broadway Company and um, we, during the holiday season, we have a caroling set. And so these students just on, um, this past Sunday, we performed with the Heartland Community Band at Holy Hill. They had a beautiful concert. Um, so these are the songs that they performed at Holy Hill um, on their own. And then we also had a combined piece that we did together um, at Holy Hill. And then we'll uh, this next week, Monday, we're going to Three Pillars to perform for the residents at Three Pillars. And then next week, Wednesday, we have our choir concert. And they'll be performing at the choir concert as well. So we're, we're happy um, to be here with you guys and share some, I, I hope that some uplifting holiday music with you guys. They get your spirits up for the season.
Yes.
The next piece that we'll be sharing with you guys is called "The Holly and the Ivy", and this is a piece that's featuring our Broadway Company, man.
The holly and the ivy, when they are both so grown, of all the trees that are in the wood, the holly bears a crown. Oh, the rising of the sun, and the rising of the deep, the playing of the merry or the singing in the choir. Oh, 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 fa la 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 la. La 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 la, fa la 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 la. The holly bears a berry, as rare as any plum. And there we had a little baby boy, who was different and he was good. Oh, the rising of the sun, and the rising of the deep, the playing of the merry or the singing in the choir. Oh, 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 fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la, oh, 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 fa la 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 la. Fa la 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 la. The holly and the ivy.
The people we're gonna share with you, these are Broadway Company women, and they're gonna be singing "A Holly Jolly Christmas".
Although you might move it down, it's okay. Yep, or it's okay. So, so you're all in. Yep.
Macey, why do you look so blue? It's Christmas time.
I just feel so melancholy.
I think we know something that can make you feel jolly, right, girls?
Yeah! A five, six, seven, bottle, holly jolly heaven. Holly, jolly bottle. A jolly heaven, holly, jolly bottle. Holly, holly, jolly, holly. Ah, ha, ba, ding dong, jolly, jolly Christmas. It's the best time of the year. I don't know, if they'll be snow, but have fun, come on, cheer. Have a holly, jolly Christmas. And when you walk down the street, say hello to your friends, your dog, and everyone you meet. Oh, the mistletoe hung where you can see. Somebody waits for you. Wants for me. Ah, ba, 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 have a holly, jolly Christmas. And in case you're dead in tears. Oh, my God, we have a holly, just believe this. So, ah, ah, so, ah, ah. Holly, jolly heaven, holly, holly, jolly bottle. Holly, jolly heaven, holly, holly, jolly ball. Holly, jolly heaven, holly, holly, jolly ball.
If they switch back, we have two more selections for you. Um, this next one will be, um, "Oh Come All Ye Faithful", and then we'll end with an arrangement of all as well.
We all, we're the king of the angels. Oh, come, let us sing to the Lord. So, go, oh, come, let us sing to the Lord. Oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye faithful. Oh, come, all ye faithful to that one. Well, oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye faithful. Oh, come, all ye faithful to that one. Oh, come, all ye. Oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye. Oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye. Oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye. Oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye. Oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye. Oh, come, all ye faithful. All ye faithful, oh, come, all ye faithful. Oh, come, all ye faithful to that one. Well, oh, come, all ye faithful, oh, come, all ye faithful. To that one, to that one. For the king of the angels. Oh, come, let us sing. Oh, come, let us sing to the Lord. Oh, come, let us sing to the Lord.
Thank you guys so much for the opportunity to perform and spread some. I'll be after the door, yeah, thank you so much. You guys are amazing.
The "Oh Come All Ye Faithful" one gets me every time. He's done that.
Hey, Brandon?
Oh, hey, Brandon, he's done that.
And now, lucky Eric Larson just followed. Eric, Eric has been coming for a couple of years now. Uh, we like to have him come and talk to the board about our school report card data, because he's an effective third-party uh, expert on the topic. And give him a chance to show the board how we're doing, and then you can ask him questions and we'll get. And uh, it's so super helpful to have someone with his expertise help us break down the data. So, take.
Copy on your device somewhere. If you wanna follow on there, that'd be great. Otherwise, it is on the screen. If you need to look up at something, we can look up there. Um, highlight, ask the report cards here. Um, it was a really good year for you folks and um, there was a nice increase in scores. Uh, you were the only uh, Union High School to be in the significantly exceeds category, so that's a great thing. It's very hard, like I, I think I said earlier, it's really hard for Union High Schools to do that, because you are just a 912 building, and you have to depend on the other feeder schools to uh, to basically uh, help you all along. And uh, uh, it, it just is a harder achievement to get there with that kind of setup. So just know that you have to find the odds a little bit, and you're doing really, really well with that. Um, as you look at the report card on page one, uh, one number to look at right off the bat is on the very top. It's your economically advanta- advanta- disadvantaged population. Um, there is a state law that says, if you have thirty-five percent economically disadvantaged populations, that you weigh achievement and growth equally on your report card. If you're less than that, they weigh achievement more than growth. If you're more than that, they weigh growth more than achievement. So if you look down at that circle uh, that you can see uh, kind of in the middle of the page, it does give you the weighting of your report card. And you can see that achievement is forty-five percent of your score. So really, we just want our kids to be really good achievers, because that really does make a huge impact on the score of the report card. That little section there is the growth section. Um, that has been typically a, uh, an area that is uh, been a little slower for you. It's been a little lower scoring, and this year there was a nice increase in that score. Um, so that does tell me that the school is definitely doing things that are moving kids, that are moving them towards higher achievement. Um, that growth score went up about, just about eight, over eight points, I think. And uh, when you have an eight-point increase, that does say that something is going on with, with achievement growth, and kids are doing better. So they're moving from grade to grade to grade in there, and they're increasing their spot against their peers in Wisconsin. So um, when you look at the, the scores below that, then, um, you can see those four main areas. Achievement, growth, uh, track, and target group. Um, the on-track one is the absenteeism rate that the school has and the graduation rate. That's an outstanding score for you. You're usually right around that ninety-eight points uh, between those two. You have kids that come to school, and you have kids that graduate really well. So that's always a good metric for you. It's usually your highest scoring metric overall. The one that really made a huge increase this year was the target group. Uh, last year, that was a sixty-point-six, and this year it's a seventy-six-point-three. And that target group is almost like a mini report card for your lowest students. So the bottom twenty-five percent of kids, based on their assessment results, in ninth, tenth, eleventh grade. And the biggest part of that score, half of that score overall, is their growth. And that went up from fifty-one point eight to sixty-one point three. It's almost a ten-point gain there.
So I just wanted to confirm, you said the target group? Is that defined as our lowest twenty-five percent?
Lowest twenty-five percent of the population, based on that score.
Okay.
And again, half of that score is the growth of those kids. So when you think about it, your lowest kids is worth twelve-point-five percent of the whole report card. The growth of the whole population is only worth eight. So the lowest kids are double-counted and worth more. And when they make huge gains like they did, that's gonna be a huge increase on your report card score. So that does show you why that number went up so high on the bottom there uh, to a seventy-six-point-three. So really good, really good things are happening on this report card overall. Uh, when you look at your achievement, um, again, achievement, your biggest metric on there, uh, it's kind of a funky metric, but when you think about it, uh, every kid in Wisconsin is worth points when they take a test. If they're advanced, they get a point and a half. If they're proficient for the meeting category now, they get a point. If they're in the approaching category, they get half a point. If they're in the lowest category developing, they get no points at all. So when you think about that scale, one point five, one point five, and zero, the report card kind of changes that to a hundred-and-fifty-point scale, per se. If a kid, while your kids average advance, your number there would be a hundred-and-fifty. While your kids average proficient or meeting, your number would be a hundred. While your kids average approaching, you'd get fifty. So you can see your numbers there are eighty-six point seven and ninety-one point five, just a titch below every kid in the school averaging proficient. Which is a really good spot to be, because we know we have really good kids. We know we have some kids that struggle with achievement. So uh, to be having the average kid be just near, uh, near a proficient student is pretty darn good. So that's what those numbers mean. And anytime you see an achievement number, I always think of that hundred-and-fifty-point scale. And that just helps you kind of understand it a little bit better. The other metric down there is the growth of your kids. Um, the state averages uh, the, the state has a really neat formula. They dump any data in uh, for any test, whether it's the ACT, the pre-ACT, or the forward for the elementary and middle school kids. And when they do that, the bell curve of the data always ends up above the number sixty-six. So the state average is always sixty-six, just how the formula works. The bell curve stops there, and that's where the average score is. So when you look at the data for the rest of the, of the scores there, you can see that uh, your ELA data is just above that sixty-six, but your math data is about eight, about fifteen points ahead of that. So twenty-four, seventeen points ahead of that. So when you think about that, we know math is still working pretty high, and we know also that ELA has come a long way. Uh, if uh, I think it was below the sixty-six last year in all the previous report cards that I've been working with you on, and it's finally above the state average. Growth is the honest metric of the report card, because it really looks to see how kids are doing from one year to the next to the next. It's a three-year average uh, for your freshman. It goes all the way back to their seventh-grade year in the school that they came from, for the, for the tenth graders. It comes from their eighth-grade year, and the ninth graders, or the eleventh graders. It starts at ninth grade to tenth grade to eleventh grade. So it really goes back and shows how kids are moving across three years of time. And that does take into consideration then when they come to your building, because every one of those kids comes from a different feeder school. And when that happens, that data then is kind of aggregated in error then. And by doing that, uh, and seeing that there's definitely growth happening here, we know we've got some tight things that have happened with uh, our ELA program, and it's really nice to see that we finally got above that state average. Um, this one is also the slowest metric to improve. It just takes a long time to get that data to move. And uh, I always say growth is your marathon number here. Achievement, you can pop an achievement score, and it's gonna raise your score really easily. But growth just takes time to get there. So this one is a little slower, um, and it's gonna probably continue to go up, because I know the practices you're putting in place are really working well. So that's a, a really good sign that we're on a good pathway. Uh, again, it's, it's, it's a slow, steady pathway, but it's moving forward and really, really moving up nicely.
And then growth isn't affected by the changing state averages on impacts? Okay, yeah.
Not at all. So that's the honest metric.
Okay.
And to be honest, you, you, you did have a nice increase in, in achievement this year, again with new cut scores, but it was because you would, you moved the kids. So that's another good point about the report card, is that you, you saw, you saw growth in achievement as well. And that is an honest metric too, from one year to the next. Achievement on this report card is only a two-year average. So they started after the cut points changed, and you saw an increase of about three points uh, from one year to the next. That means you're moving. Any questions about page one?
What's that one's chronic absenteeism?
Oh, I forgot that one. Um, chronic absenteeism, they're gone at least nineteen or twenty days. It's, it's ten percent of school, basically. So a kid is measured in half-day increments. So when a kid misses one or two, I think it's one block here, they're considered half a day absent. They miss two or three, that'd be a full day absence. But you have to, you have about still eighteen days before you become chronically absent. Any other questions about page one? And when you think about the number there, ninety-seven, your chronic absenteeism percentage is three percent. They take that number from a hundred, and that's the percent of kids that are chronically absent. So a really low number.
I think, could that be affected by illness or things like that?
Illness vacations, um, you name it, it's, it's a part of that metric.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing, it doesn't really count your school activities. Kids can go to sports or uh, field trips or things like that, that does not count.
Okay.
But if they are sick or they're on a vacation, that definitely comes in.
Okay.
Any other questions about page one? If you go to page two, uh, one nice thing to look at on the top of all of the, the uh, the area, achievement areas, uh, is they, shows you where you fall against all other high schools in the state. You're at the ninety-eight percentile against all other high schools when it comes to achievement. So that's a really nice spot to be. There's, there's not a lot of wiggle room there, you know? You're, you're, you're getting near the top. Uh, as you go down then, you can see all of the subgroups in the school that have at least twenty students. And when you do that, you can see a number there, again on that hundred-and-fifty-point scale. And you can see where all those different subgroups kind of fall uh, based on that number. You also have a dropping arrow or an increasing arrow, and that shows you how that subgroup went up or down from one year to the next. So I'll just give you just a second to look at that. One thing to remember too, is you always lose a group of kids and you gain a group of kids. So you might have a larger class that was a senior la- or a junior last year that took a test that falls off, and a smaller one that comes on in that grade. Uh, so that might affect the numbers and the size of those subgroups as well. And you might have had high achievers that fell off and low achievers that came in, so that, that also affects the data as well. And you might have had high achievers that fell off and low achievers that came in, so that that also affects the data as well. And then on the bottom of that page, you'll notice that the trend over the last two years in both ELA and math, and you can definitely see in ELA, there was a huge increase there, especially in your advanced and your proficient numbers. Uh they went up quite a bit. Math stayed relatively the same. Any questions about that page at all? And one one thing for me, I know the focus has been on ELA and a lot of the professional development that has been happening here has been focused on that. And to see the data go up like that is a really significant uh testament to what's happening with those uh those professional development pieces that you're uh making sure are happening in the schools. Okay, if you look to page three, um one thing that uh the report card always has on the top there is it has the uh participation rates of subgroups. It has the entire building and about ninety-eight point five percent of all students tested. And then it also shows you the the uh the one that had the lowest participation rate. Oftentimes it is special ed. Uh the number we like to have there is ninety-five percent or a little bit below that. But there's sometimes where special ed kids just uh don't test or their parents don't want them to test or and it's the parents' right not to test them. So I mean, there's uh opt-outs do happen. If you scroll down then to the bottom of that page, uh this is a a set of graphs that have been around since the very first report card ever came out. And on this one, what they do is they show you all your subgroups for the last two years and how they changed in advanced and meeting and approaching and developing. And you can kind of follow different categories. I like to add up uh the advanced in the in the meeting category to see, you know, how did that change from one year to the next? I also looked at the developing category to be decreased the number there, to be increased the number there, you know, what happened there. Uh so uh like one thing I look at is our students with disabilities. I want to know, did that change a lot? Uh and you can see that that was relatively stable, even even gaining a new group of kids and losing a group of kids in ELA. You did the same thing on the math side and see it's relatively stable there as well.
Oops, can you just pause on your, or?
Uh math or English?
No, where where it was right here.
Now, all the data here does look at eleventh grade and it's all the kids that take uh pre-ACT secure in ninth grade and tenth grade and they take an ACP in eleventh grade, so all three grade levels are testing. Uh they do test in uh English, reading, science, math, uh and in eleventh grade, writing as well. So all four of those subjects are kind of, or all five of those subjects are kind of a uh wielded together to use deposit score. Uh and uh the state looks at ELA, which is reading, English and writing, and math alone as a standalone subject. Any questions about this page at all?
Um I need to, I have a question.
Yep.
For the economically disadvantaged, how do you know that they're economically disadvantaged?
Uh they do have to fill out a form. Uh so uh any anyone that uh does get career reduced lunch fills out a form. With the lunch program, that form then does go to DPI and DPI then designates them as an economically disadvantaged student. And that can be free or reduced. Any other questions about that page? Okay, let's flip to the growth page. Um this one is another big success for you. Uh last year, you were at the fifty-eighth percentile against all other high schools. This year, you're at the seventy-ninth. So that's a pretty significant increase. And and again, this is an honest metric that uh no, no cut score changes affect that at all. So it's just the hard work of your school, your teachers, your students uh that that makes this number happen. So to be close to eightieth percentile is pretty darn impressive. Uh and and again, this is a hard one to move and to move that far that quickly is is a pretty impressive piece of data. Same thing as you go down and look at those uh bubbles kind of on the bottom there. Uh those blue bubbles are uh showing where your school lands, basically, with all those different groups of kids. Uh last year in ELA, there was only two blue ones. This year, uh there's only two white ones. So that just shows you how how far that side has come. Uh and uh when when you think about the data there, that three going down the center is the state average and that's where the bell curve falls. So you've kind of just pushed all your data basically to the bell curve and that's a pretty significant movement uh over the last few years. You have one Asian students that are they're even close to the four there. That's a pretty nice uh number. And again, all the numbers that they keep on the same pace they're going uh will probably be closer to that four next year, I would expect. On the math side, uh the numbers are are pretty consistent from where they were last year. Uh you have a lot of uh uh fours, a lot of higher threes. Anytime you get to a four there, that's full deviation above the norm. And a full deviation is pretty impressive. You know, that that shows that this that group of kids is really moving fast. Uh when you to the fives, and I've seen some schools at fives and sixes there, uh that's two or three deviations above the norm. That's exceptional growth. So that's kind of the goal that you always want to get to. How do we keep moving these kids as fast as we can uh with with the the different programs that we're putting in place?
Eric, what did you say?
Uh on the top, fifty. Yep, so that's a really nice increase there.
Yes.
Any other questions about the growth page at all? Uh last year, there wasn't no uh no white on the math side. Uh this year, the the two, two point nines fell from a three, so the the fall was not very big. So just know there there's still, I I would say between two point eight and three point two is where the norm is. They, if you're in that range, you're really um, I have a state average and that's not a bad, that's not a bad spot. If you flip that to the next page, it was just target group. Uh this was the superstar page for you. Last year, you were the sixty-first percentile and you grew to the eighty-fifth percentile against all other high schools. So this one is the spot where you did make the biggest gains. And again, remember that growth is the biggest area here uh and it's half of the score, so you always want that growth to be uh significant. Uh when you look at this page, the the difference here is between all this one and the other pages is that on this one, you're comparing your students to your own students. The green line there is your lowest twenty-five percent. The gray line is your highest seventy-five percent of kids. So it's just showing to see exactly how each of those kids are achieving and growing. When you look at the growth, you can see that even though the growth is a little less than the uh rest of the population there, the green numbers have increased quite a bit. Uh last year, ELA was a fifty-two, now it's a sixty-four. Uh last year, math, it was a fifty point nine, now it's a fifty-eight point four. So both those uh kids on the low, both those groups on the low end did make significant movement. Uh the rest of the population too is doing really quite well. Uh the math students for sure, the upper seventy-five percent there, they're growing at a at a really nice clip. So uh significant things are happening uh with all of your populations, really, when you think about it. Same thing on the achievement side. Uh when you look at that, those numbers were a lot lower last year and they've made some significant gains there. But when you look at the top end, your top seventy-five, they're averaging proficient or just just a titch below. So we know that the group of kids that are making up the bulk of your population are doing really, really well. And then on the bottom, it gives you two other metrics, the chronic absenteeism right there. Um it is a little bit higher for your target group. Six percent of those kids are chronically absent. Uh so we know that, like again, some of those kids struggle to come to school and that's part of the achievement problems that they have. Uh attendance is almost always a root cause of that. So we we know that there are some students that uh do have some difficulty there. And then the last piece there is graduation and those are two outstanding numbers. Uh graduation looks at two different cohorts. They look last year at the class of twenty twenty-one, the class of twenty twenty-four. And they look at how those two classes graduate students and you can see both those numbers, their their uh the graduation rates of those two different groups. So we have target group from those two years and we have the non-target. And the non-target group has perfect graduation and just two point four percent are not graduating from the other ones. And a lot of times, those are kids that are in special ed who'll continue on uh for three more years and uh they they have the right to do that. So uh that's oftentimes what we find in that number here at school. Any questions about the target group at all? Okay, let's pop to the last page. Um top, up in the top here is a ninety-nine point five percent of all schools for graduation and attendance. Uh so that's a pretty nice number. It's pretty hard to beat that. Uh I'm sure you could try. You can definitely see that uh you're twenty-two points ahead of the chronic absenteeist rate of the state and about eight point ahead of the graduation rate of the state. So those are two, again, this is usually your your strongest number because your kids come to school and they graduate. Uh the last page uh after that is the last data page of the report card that has actual scoring. It's the uh last three years of chronic absenteeism and the graduation rates for your students. Uh as you go to the next one, the line I look at is the second line there. Uh it's the all students from your building. Uh and when you look at that, you can see that uh that's the percent of kids that were chronically absent in twenty-one, twenty-two, it's four point one. Twenty-two, twenty-three was two point five and then twenty-three, twenty-four was two point seven. So a really nice uh a piece of data there for you. Your kids come to school. There's no subgroups that even have uh uh an angling of a problem there. Uh and it's a, it's a, it's a spot that I know your administration has spent a lot of time on. Uh they're really focused on attendance and they and they they know the kids that are not coming and they they have plans for those kids, so that's a good thing. Same thing on the bottom, that graduation rate stands out to me as you go down. Uh and you can see all the different rates of those kids in the subgroups uh for those two years for graduation. There's very few kids that don't graduate from your school. Any questions about that piece of data at all?
Um I just have a question.
Yep.
So with like the math and the English, when you look at the all students, like for instance on page three,
Yep.
It's the one thousand four hundred and two. And then at the bottom, when you look at the um the on-track for graduation, it's the two thousand and eight. Does that mean that the one thousand four hundred and two are the ones that took the test, but there are two thousand and eight?
Uh attendance always counts seniors, so they're not.
And seniors don't.
They don't take tests.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions you might have? Okay, so then there's three additional pages on the high school report card. Uh they are additional ones by state laws. Uh the first one is post-secondary preparation. Uh you've probably heard of a portrait of a graduate uh that schools talk about often. They they want to see a more well-balanced uh uh piece of information. And one thing that the report card then did was they added advanced courses. Industry-recognized credentials and work-based learning, just to show you exactly how kids do in other areas of your school besides academics. And you can definitely see that for advanced courses, you're double the state average when it comes to AP courses, which is phenomenal. Uh you have two hundred thirty-eight kids that took two enrollment courses with a college, uh either a tech school class or a UW class or private school class. Uh industry-recognized credentials are actual certifications kids earn in in CT programs. It could be uh uh welding certifications, it could be safety certifications. I know there's, there's a Pro Start for uh uh education in there for health, uh CMA for health occupations. All those things could be an industry-recognized credential. And then the last one there is work-based learning. That usually is a youth apprenticeship. Uh so kids that are getting an actual uh uh real-world job kind of scenario in high school before they move on to the world of worker or post-secondary uh education. And then that chart below that shows the different populations that are taking those courses. Does anyone have any specific questions on this one? Our next one highlights the exact thing we just saw before me, uh the arts uh pieces that are happening here. Uh we're still looking for that dance teacher. We didn't have that one yet, so uh uh but we do have art and design, music and theater. And you can see how uh your school kind of uh relates to the state average there. And then again, you have those similar groups on the bottom by subgroup, so you can see what populations are in those different uh realms. And then we have a new fun one on the on the end. Um there was a state law that was passed a couple of years ago that was looking at uh different violations that happened on school property. And it could be parents, it could be students, it could be spectators at sporting events, you name it, but if they got somehow arrested at school and charged with a crime, uh they appear on your school report right now. Uh and it's incidents of homicide, sexual assault, burglary, robbery or theft, uh battery, arson, possession of alcohol or controlled substances, unlawful possession of firearms and a violation of disorderly conduct. So all of those appear uh now on the report card. Uh you can see on the bottom there that you have a higher rate uh than the state average when it comes to some of these things. That's just wanting to note that this happened here. It's a double the state average, so just know that. Uh the bad ones, though, you're pretty much right. Any questions about that specifically? So that is your report card, a very nice report card this year, lots of things to celebrate and uh it it's nice to see when when you work with the school long enough, when the when the the marathon starts to happen and the data starts to rise, truly to see that all the hard work come to fruition and that's what's happening now. You know, you're at the point where you've crossed a really good line, getting to significantly exceeds. Uh that's really tough for a Union High School and you made it, so just know that.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Before moving on, I just wanted to once again call out uh Conrad and our administration for the hard work that they've done. Um Kim, if you want to add anything to that, I just think that uh um there's, there's some real great and amazing things that are happening here. Um so I don't want to gloss over it too much. I know we just went through the whole report card, but anything you want to share to that with that, Kim?
No, I I thank you for making that comment and and I would just add that um clearly there's been so much change uh that has taken place over the course of the last two years and it has uh it certainly involved our whole administrative team, but um our our faculty has been, has been up to the task. So uh you know, I I I commend uh all of our teachers and staff uh for uh working through all the change and and um and clearly uh having the impact that they're having. So um I look forward to to next year's. I really do. I think uh we're on a, we're on a great trajectory. Nice work.
Thanks, Kim.
So the next topic under my report is just an announcement to make sure everybody knows there was some conversation about potentially changing the graduation date uh in this year in June. And that has not been decided. I just want to make clear to everybody that the graduation date will remain as scheduled, June sixth, twenty twenty-sixth. Um so we'll get that information out as well when Adam puts out some of the school newsletter information. And we'll make sure that's what's on our website as well. And then the last item is the board may discuss to take action on a possible petition for annexation of Arrowhead High School District by the village of Heartland, the degree of draft. That document there. So we just wanted to make sure that if anyone had any questions, they could get those asked tonight. The village, I believe, is looking at this on their next agenda, I believe, but I'm not exactly sure what what meeting they have that scheduled for, Kim might know.
Well, i- in fact, um on November twenty-fourth, uh they, the board scheduled this as a uh an agenda item. Uh member Blagie and myself did attend that village board meeting. And um I I did provide a public comment in that session. Uh certainly, um only uh as I represented myself, but I think um my thoughts were kind of a culmination of the comments that I had uh heard from many of board members speak uh relative uh to the annexation. And so um following uh public comment, the board kind of mulled through a number of things. And it really was um, you know, with the effort to try to uh ascertain their level of interest. And so um certainly, um as the the letter from um President Fannerstill suggests, the board is is interested in in moving ahead. So um many thanks to Conrad, Jeff and Bob Butler uh for then putting together the petition document uh which is before us tonight. So this uh then uh would be signed uh if it were approved, sent to the village of Heartland. Uh the village would send it on to uh the Department of Justice uh for the state for their review. And um and we'd kind of go from there. So uh the the three parts are are kind of outlined in in uh one of the attachments. Uh hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review. So um they're interested. Uh I think the the board comments at the end of the day, and Lynn, you can jump in here as well. But um I I think they really centered very um heavily on uh the historic uh um attachment of Heartland to our high school. In general, it's the right thing to do uh to annex and and uh once again uh be partners in in the village. So uh Lynn, I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, I think you summed up the meeting really well. Uh there was a overall majority of the board was very interested in a partnership with Arrowhead and open to suggestions of what that may look like. Um we had a very nice presentation from their uh chief of police um with some of the things that they already. Um, with some of the things that they already do for the village, um some of the things that way, so I'd just say overall it was a good conversation.
Thank you. So I think I think what's left then is uh, you know, any any board discussion, any further board discussion on. Uh, moving forward with the petition to be sent to the village uh and uh and uh. Uh, a a vote?
I just, I had the opportunity to listen to the recording because I was unable to make it. Um, but there were two things that I wanted to ask just for further clarification, one. Um, one of the board members had brought up a sewer system issue. Um, and so I think there was like further clarification needed for that. And then two, one thing that everybody was, I'm majority was excited, but they were like. We really should understand the tax implications, now I don't know what came out of that discussion, I don't. Know if they looked into it further uh. Because uh it was brought up, but I don't know what the outcomes of those conversations were and so. I just want to be transparent to the community that there were two things that were brought up and if we can solidify that. And know like, A, there's nothing wrong with the sewers, we've done everything, and two, there are no tax implications on Heartland residents. I I would feel good, but it was just two things that I I wanted to discuss with the with the group. Because I don't have further context on it, but if somebody else does, bestow the knowledge upon me.
Jeff, maybe you can, maybe you can clarify on on this the sewer itself. My understanding is when annexation uh came up at one point in the past uh between the board and it 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 really never went anywhere, but. Uh, the village of Heartland had apparently asked for um uh. Architectural statistics on where the 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 sewers uh were located and they wanted a lot of data. At the end of the day, um. It 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 is my understanding that that's not uh even a concern for the village of Heartland. Uh, we own that, don't we? And uh and and we can potentially supply them with uh. Uh, you know, some blueprints on things, but I'm not sure that that even really matters.
This is the first I'm hearing of anything related to sewers, I mean unless they're, I know water mains, you know, we'd get some valves to replace, but I haven't heard anything about sewer.
So the conversation that happened there was there was one person on the board that. Said for instance, if we became annexed into Heartland, if there be a water main or sewer issue at Arrowhead. She wanted to know that it would not be the village of Heartland's issue.
No, anything on our property, we we take care of, even the the valves to the shut-off valves for the water mains. Out at the street level, then coming to here, we are responsible to take care of.
Right, it sounded like there it was more information that she just needed clarification on.
Right, and and President Fannerstill did kind of try to clarify that 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 evening as well.
Oh, and then one more thing was the SRO officers. Um, because uh the chief seemed to um. Want to potentially supply SRO officers from Heartland. Which I I don't know like what will happen with that, but it's something that we should consider. With our two SRO officers now, I'm not like dissenting, I'm just discussing, so.
Yeah, and that was.
I I don't know like what would we do, is that something that we? But, you know, is that something that if we did annex, would Heartland drive that decision or is that still in our, is the ball in our court?
I think the district school board can decide if you want to.
Okay.
SROs is my understanding.
Great.
So we can certainly double check on that, but I can't imagine. A- any school district that they control that.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, it's a little different when we have all the different municipalities with our setup. I think that's one of the arguments why you'd rather have a county. Um, body doing it, because they can go across jurisdictions. Um, we haven't had a lot of conversation about it because we don't know if it's going to actually happen or not, but we can certainly look into it more if you want to get a little more concrete. But but my understanding is the board can totally decide whether they want to keep going with block check county SROs or go with the village.
Yeah, and I think that evening, um the chief of police did um a a fine job of framing. The decision just that way, certainly, I think the village's um perspective, the 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 police chief's perspective is that they would be hopeful. Uh, that they they would supply uh the officers. However, they were of the understanding that we had the option and that it's the board's decision to retain our SROs or. Uh, to look to uh uh Heartland's police to provide officers.
Kim, do you recall, I thought they said at that meeting as well, there's going to be no tax implications for the village.
That was, that was certainly um President Fannerstill's take and having having had discussions with um. Uh, w- with his legal and uh with his business manager. Um, that said, a lot of that gets worked through, so we petition the village. It doesn't mean that the village has to accept it, and in fact, they'll do further due diligence when they receive the petition from us. Um, and um and you know, we certainly can't continue to do any on our side. Uh, but it really just sets the wheels in motion for them to consider this and so. Uh, it's not a done deal because we've uh sent a petition to them. Um, it's kind of a starting point for uh further consideration on their part and then they'll respond.
Yeah, this is at the end, all this, there's a lot of diligence that's. And then do we have final say, when it comes back to us after they go through their portion, we get a chance to relook at everything, or how does that? This is it for us, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine if you were to say we'd like to withdraw it for some reason, that would be an option, I don't know. Why that would happen, but.
Okay.
If something were to come up and there was a change of thought, I think the board could always say, well, we'd rather sign another petition.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then. Here I go, no, so and Town of Merton had like nothing to say or have, has anybody reached out to the Town of Merton? Does Town of Merton know that this is happening, I mean, I don't think they need to know.
They get notified next or as part of the process, I think after it goes to the state and then it goes to them, is my understanding, not an expert on it, but I'm pretty sure they have a chance to respond that.
Okay.
How that works.
Okay, I just didn't know.
I feel like somewhere along the way, somebody said that's something if they mentioned to somebody with the town, but I can't remember, we didn't like do anything.
It's not a requirement um. On our part or 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 on Heartland's part, I don't think.
I I was just wondering if anyone had asked. I didn't, so. But I can. I think at one time they were aware, we were thinking, I bet it was a while ago though.
I feel like that's.
A few years ago, would you say?
Well, I thought even more recently.
Are you thinking like the first time this subject was approached?
I think so, yeah.
So this basically assigning a petition tonight would basically just set the wheels in motion for more research.
Right, and I know the petition here, um everyone can sign it, so.
Okay, okay. So we don't have to take any verbal actions, we're just signing a petition if we.
No, you have to approve the, you have to approve it and then you have to sign it.
And then sign it.
Got it, got it. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition for direct annexation.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes, I guess we'll send around the center of the petition.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the. Your attendance before Connor. Uh, okay, so the next portion of the meeting is public comment, uh there are some rules that I'll read. Uh, communication and comments uh from members of the public. Agenda item requires, anyone wishing to speak to the board must present, be present and register in the signup form. A three-minute timeline limit is enforced, public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president, or in this case, since I'm acting as um Kim today, uh the board vice president. Um, may respond to comments or questions, or is that, Kim, is that the way that you see that?
Of.
I'm acting in your role, okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, very good, um let's see, where was I? Uh, let's see, the board president has authority, or vice president in this case, uh to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comment unless designated by the board vice president. The board vice president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comment will be taken under advisement if public comments are in regard to an agenda item. When the board discusses that particular item during the medium meeting. Uh, the board may or may not address the comments or questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and or take action. There will be no citizen communication during the time of the agenda topics. Speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. Having said all of that, first person to speak is Benjamin Sobchak.
Hey, everybody, uh Benjamin Sobchak, on my building in Heartland. I have a kid who's currently here in Arrowhead, another kid who graduated, obviously. Um, my main reason to talk before the board is pretty short easy, um I would encourage the board to not spend time or uh. Energy, which I know is looted, of course, um some of the controversial issues that I've seen coming for the board. Create an issue you're going to vote on later uh today about biological sex, I mean, biological sex. Uh, I think the board does great things, um I think the performances we've seen, the recent uh. Sports achievements that Arrowhead has showed some of the great things we do here at Arrowhead, I think the other stuff's a distraction. And it's a distraction that poisons the community against a great high school, a proud living area. Um, as almost everyone lives in this area, Arrowhead is a real gem, a crown, we're going to keep it growing and. Um, moving forward with positive things. So that's my main message, is that I would encourage the board to uh not agree to the uh. Issues being brought up later today, um and to avoid these things that aren't central to the mission of Arrowhead. Um, I did look up while I was sitting here, uh mission of Arrowhead is part of Arrowhead Way, which was initially created um in partnerships with the board. With staff, with students, a little back in two thousand eleven, you guys are the board, you know Arrowhead's background efficient. So I don't think it's being considered forward to the mission, I don't figure it's a positive part of the PDIS system. And uh I think you guys should uh not incorporate it. Um, and as I was sitting here thinking, I'm like, okay, I want to talk before the board, I only have three minutes. Um, I did notice like, wow, it's kind of weird, um that I'm here and I'm hearing Broadway Company, which did a beautiful performance. Uh, I'm pretty sure I bought a couple burgers from them, they were doing a fundraiser in front of the statistics a while ago, and I'm, I love supporting the arts. And I'm like, wow, I'm going to say that I don't want them to do this, and very clearly there's men and women that are being split and singing different parts of this performance. And I realized, no, no, this is great, this actually helps prove my point, because the reason they were split that way wasn't like biological differences, it's for the singing purposes. Right, like the higher register and the lower register, so in the first song they could do the ding dong dings, have that beautiful melody. It was all about the register of the voices, it wasn't about biology determination, it was their performance of their art. And so I think, no, no, that works fine for me. And then there was the one song that had hubba hubba in it, and I'm like, that's that's a little weird, and that shows again that some of these things are historical artifacts. We don't need to worry about, um we can have that performance, it can be a great enjoyable performance, we don't have to get hung up on it. Um, school report card showed the great work you guys have been doing, um and I don't think we should waste time focusing on these other issues. Um, it was highlighted that you guys are a union school district, which of course is a double-edged sword, you kind of get students rising to you. Um, for example, Heartland Wayside, um which I know many people are interested in. Um, and those students rise to you and then you try to help them and meet them where they're at. And I think that a focus on respecting the students is a focus I would love for Arrowhead to keep going. Um, I also, of course, saw the very impressive scores that Arrowhead has for academic achievements. Um, I think that instead of those being referred to, what some people could call culture war issues. I really think that's due to the earlier resource period and the red, blue, uh, I'm calling that right, the black schedule. I think it's been a great achievement, and while it may take a couple of years to see the impact, I personally can't put block scheduling. It's a much better way to give high-quality instruction with beating forces, the twenty-first century skills you've got for our students. Um, so I really think that's a positive thing you guys have done, more of that, that's the other stuff, is what I would want. Um, because you have that great achievement, especially the higher-than-average achievements in your target group. Um, I would push the board to focus now, our academics are in such a great place, they're going towards some of the behaviors. That might be happening and helping our students work on such emotional growths would be an area to highlight. Um, the only negative thing I heard from the excellent summary report the gentleman was doing is the fact that we had um. At the very end of the portrait of the graduate, um that we had a double the normal uh crime rate. Uh, double the state average for crime rates on campus, which of course could be a lot of just one-offs, or it could be something else. Um, but I myself am an educator in public school, I'm not up here. Um, and I've seen a lot more of the students in my twenty-two, twenty-two years of being an educator. We're dealing with a lot of things outside of school that I can't control, but I of course would help with, just like you guys, I don't care about our students, I care about my students. And we've seen more vaping, you've seen more drug use, we've seen more of those coping mechanisms that we know are unhealthy for our high schoolers. But it's increasing, especially in the times since COVID. And I think um since we have such great academics, that we could put that time and energy into helping students with those other issues. Uh, more help with those couple of things, socio-emotional learning, that I know they do at some of the feeder schools. And I think Arrowhead could also help students focus on, uh maybe even during that early resource period. Um, and so uh that's something I want to put forward towards the board, to again celebrate our achievements, and I would encourage that other uh focus. Um, one last thing, since I haven't had time yet, I did want to congratulate the board as well, um with my own uh kid that graduated. Um, I've always been really, really happy and impressed uh with the uh. Credentialing system that you guys have, the dual enrollment system and the work-based learning, uh my uh my child took advantage of that. And and of course, over graduate, I was really proud that they called that out. And uh because I want Arrowhead to be successful, I would also encourage the board to continue pushing for community outreach. And more and more civic engagement by your students, I think when people in the community see that kind of excellence we saw today. Um, we see all the great things that Arrowhead does and things like the referendum. If I can say I personally voted for it, if I can say I wanted to put that money into Arrowhead, I think we can get more of the community on board with that, to make those investments. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Uh, next person on the public sheet is Jane Owen.
Good evening, can everyone hear me? Yeah, just short and sweet public service announcement reminder to the public that uh if you wish to apply for election ballot to the board. Now is the time to start doing that, you have until January seventh. To turn your documents here to the administrative office, if it's for Arrowhead, there are three seats coming open in April. Um, also looking for feeder schools, but it is a packet available from the admin office, short, sweet symbol. Um, and consider your public service, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, next person is Darcy.
Yep, I thought so, I was going to ask you to.
Subcheck, sorry.
I'm just.
Sorry.
Okay, um one quick question and another comment, are we broadcasting live now or is this still being recorded and then posted later?
Recorded and posted.
All right, I was interested in different with the camera, so, um, okay. So, um, okay, so y'all know who I am, you know, I usually speak from the heart and I use the experience from when I volunteer with uh teens from the school. To provide feedback to you guys, um, thought maybe tonight I'd try to go a different route, but um. For policy eight nine one two, restoring biological truth is biologically false and incomplete. It ignores that there are biological differences and variations that occur about as often as a child is born with red hair. Um, real, the reality is that uh. genders are more diverse, uh, than just male and female. Scientific and medical journals have documented these natural variations in chromosomes, hormones, and reproductive anatomy that children are born with, and recognize that gender is in fact a spectrum. So, for example, if someone was born with chromosomes XXY or XYY, which box do they check on their school form that will only have male or female? They aren't either of those. So it's exclusive of those children. Um, this is the biological truth. Eliminating this part of the truth from science classes is detrimental to students holding on to outdated science. Um, gender fluidity is also banned from being taught by this policy, yet gender throughout history has become, has been exactly that, fluid. Uh, for example, King Louis XIV wore heels and tights as part of his outfit, pretty much on a daily basis, right? Um, those are things today that we more or less associate with women, right? Um, more recently and also before, clergymen, their vestments are often dress like, right? But again, we probably associate that more with a female, a dress, right? So, gender and gender identity cannot be encapsulated into just those two boxes. Um, and why not have a non-binary box to accommodate all those that don't fall equally into that box? Um, is it because we don't understand that, we don't know the science? Um, I, I don't know what it is. I mean, I didn't know that for the longest time growing up, but I have learned that these things are actually, are actually visible things that people have. They may have multiple genitalia, they may have, um, uh, excess, um, hormones in their body, and parents are having to make choices for them when they're younger. And those choices may not be how that person actually is as an adult. Maybe they're like.
You could wrap it up, Darcy, you have three minutes.
Sure, yeah. Um, let's see. It may not align with what you or I grew up with, but science and medical fields have evolved to catch up with biology. Policy 8912 is not restoring truth for biology, it is going quite the opposite, falsifying it. The exceptions for AP Psych and Sociology lend credence that this policy would not be rightly accepted as encompassing truthful biology or settled science. And I will wrap up, but I want to say that I will not be staying for the rest of the meeting, unfortunately. But I would more than happily gather psychologists, medical professionals, scientists for you to ask questions to, should you actually, um, take what I said as truth, because it is. Um, and then you could speak with people who know the subject. I don't know about any of you, but I don't know if any of you are scientists, or doctors, or psychologists. But I think that it is, when you're making a statement like that, I think you need to actually consult with people who are in actual.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sobchak. Okay. We are moving on to the consent agenda. Um, for this portion, um, I will turn it over to the board, if you have any comments or questions on anything in the consent agenda, we can fill it out. Um, I know that, uh, Ms. Angelie likes to, uh, share the information on donations.
Yes, I'm prepared to do that, if you'd like me to go ahead with that.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And after Ann does her thing, I have something to talk to about.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, great, all right. Um, yes, I would love to share a couple donations. Um, the fir- first one, uh, coming from Matthew, is it Dufek? Is that pronounced correctly? Okay, Dufek. Um, donation to HOSA Future Health Professionals, um, the amount of $1,500. Thank you very much for that. And the second one from Generac Foundation to Robotics, $1,000. So, thank you for both of those, that's fantastic.
Excellent.
Okay, and I just had something, uh, the report from the November 12th regular school board meeting. Um, under the personnel and legislation, there's a vote that was taken, but it, it's not exactly what happened. Moved by Faris, seconded by Angelie, to move the graduation ceremony up one week to May 30th, 2026. Motion carried by voice vote nine to zero. I voted against that, so that would be eight to one. So I'll just make a note in that, Kate, and.
I will.
Only approve. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Thank you, Amy. Okay, any other callouts from the consent agenda? All right, if I hear no other callouts, uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Great. Any other questions or thoughts? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, and now we're moving on to the committee reports. Start with curriculum.
Okay, so I guess I'll take care of this one, Lindsay.
Yeah, and if you want further voiceover.
We had a meeting on the November 20th, and, uh, Sue presented the recommended 2026, 27 course guide and summer school guide, and we talked about that in a bit of detail, along with the credit situation. Um, we're sticking with the 50 credits total to graduate, I believe is what we decided. And many members asked questions, or answered, and we're going to be voting on the course guide, uh, for approval tonight. And then Donna Smith was the guest who came to talk about library books. And, uh, she was talking about the ordering process and the future ready library plan. But the committee discussed the process used for consideration of and ordering library books, and how library funds can be spent. And we also asked questions that were answered, and I do believe we gave Donna some guidance as to the types of books that we're looking for, a little more uplifting, um, not so dark, virtue based, classical, uh, that type of thing. So, uh, we gave her some direction, and I think she was very receptive, and that was our, uh, meeting. And future agenda items include, uh, Constitution Day, and then Sue, you're going to discuss the director's report. Yeah, we got a few delayed updates. So I think that kind of covers it, if there's anything else that you want to add, Lindsay, or.
Um, the next meeting, December 18th, before we go to the end. From one word off. We decided to keep it light. Yes. We hope everyone will be there.
Yeah.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you both. All right, uh, the next group, finance and building and grounds.
We got.
Oh, we do.
Yeah. Group of course guide, and all of those courses that we approved in our last.
Sorry. Yes, back, back up to that, sorry.
Okay.
Trying to slam through it. Um, so discussion and action to approve the 2026, 2027 Arrowhead course guide that we reviewed. If I could get a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and further discussion on the course guide.
Kate did a great job designing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kate, everyone, Kate.
All right. Any other thoughts or kudos?
Well, just the collaboration too, right? Cause that was like a heavy, like, so.
Great, so, beautiful.
Or one other thing we did mention was computer science, having more options regarding computer science and looking at AI again.
Yeah.
Ahead of things in the future, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there are no other comments or concerns on the 26, 27 course guide, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Fantastic. Now we'll move on to finance and buildings and grounds.
Yeah, so we met on November 18th, had a nice, robust meeting to discuss really the long year, ten year capital plan. Uh, four main items that we talked about for the maintenance shed update. Uh, secure entrances, extending Arrowhead drive into fourth classrooms. Uh, nothing came out of it in terms of needing to vote tonight, so we'll continue those discussions. I'll actually be back to you next Tuesday. And I'll promise some potential actions. So we'll be forward to that. We also have a audit review. And, um, the only thing I'd like to talk about there is kudos to Jeff yet again. We passed a stellar audit, and, uh, no concerns from audit perspective, so congratulations to Jeff and the team. Can't thank you enough for all the career, and the audit team every year, so appreciate it. Keep up the work.
Yeah.
So yeah, the next meeting, the next Tuesday.
So that's the, what is that?
Next Tuesday is the, uh, the 20, wait, no, the 16th.
16?
Yeah.
Okay.
16.
Any other questions or comments from, from anybody?
Excellent, Brandon.
Thanks, man.
Okay, the next group, moving to personnel and legislation.
Okay, so, and policy, cause.
Well, yeah, I'll be.
Are you gonna go after? Okay, so I get, I can start, I guess, um, with, with personnel. Um, kind of the primary thing with personnel that we looked at was the collective commitments, um, for the board. Um, thank you, Conrad, for, um, kind of taking, um, lead with that, taking out everything that we discussed and condensing down to a page, so that we don't have five pages. Um, that was very helpful, and I think that is, is that on here to be approved tonight? That's one of the things to be, um, approved this evening. Um, let's see. Uh, there was, um, a proposal we're gonna be talking about, and I think that's gonna be pushed off a little bit, but, um, looking at if the, um, school day can be, um, extended, but that's part of curriculum and personnel. But we gotta talk to the bus people. Those bus people. Um, and let's see, what else do we have to talk about? Oh, and then legislation.
Right, so I'll be working with, getting the dates set up for the 27th.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. I think that was started.
Great. So we have a discussion and action for it?
Yep, discussion and action to approve the, uh, collective commitments of the AHS school board.
Okay. Any thoughts from the board? We have a, uh, we need a, uh, yeah, we need a.
I'll make a motion.
A motion.
I'll make an emotion to approve the collective commitments.
Great.
I'll second.
All right. Any thoughts from anyone in the house or online?
Well, thank you for the rewrite, I, um, I think they're, they're dead on.
Perfect. Okay. All that are in favor of the revised collective commitments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right.
Perfect.
Yay.
Thank you, number Angelie.
Yes, sir.
All right, now we'll move on to the policy committee report. Again, a nice, robust meeting. Um, we like, we like when we have the robust meetings. Um, okay, so for this meeting, we discussed, uh, policy changes to 5113 with regard to open remote, remote enrollment, um, within the district versus, um, bringing in anyone, so this is a continued discussion piece. Um, and, uh, we are, let's see, and that's something that we're gonna, uh, have more discussion on in the December school board meeting. So we can have, kind of, have it in front of a lot of ears, or as many ears as possible. Um, so hopefully that, uh, members of the public get a chance to, uh, understand where we're, decide, are thinking about going as a board. Uh, and then, uh, Adam Perth discussed, uh, the proposed changes to 5460 with regards to graduation requirements. Um, uh, to actually reflect the, the practices, uh, there's no impact on these changes. We're gonna basically stay where we are versus where, um, it was documented incorrectly in our, we were thinking about moving it to the one point per class versus where we are currently, so we're gonna keep it as is. Um, I discussed the proposed policy on restoring biological truth. Um, that's open for discussion and action this evening. Uh, and then we also reviewed, uh, policy 5310 with health services, um, based on apparent concern, there's gonna be, that's gonna be the only piece that we're actually gonna move forward to the next, uh, policy meeting with regards to, uh, a minor tweak by, uh, Conrad and his team, uh, to potentially make that a little bit more clear, if there was any, some clarity issues there. Um, and then, let's see, I think that's it. And our next meeting is actually gonna be, again, piggybacked with, uh, on January 6th with you guys.
And I apologize, I did not mention that, but you are correct.
Yeah, that'll be nice. Yeah, we're like.
Yeah. Pound.
Yeah, pounds. So we have a couple of, uh, uh, let's see, discussion and action items. We'll start with, um, the graduation requirements, I know that, uh, um, this is basically, yeah, the discussion and action, uh, uh, and changes to the policy 5460 to be in line with basically where we are today versus where we were thinking about going. Um, any questions or any thoughts on that before we ask for a motion? Okay, if I hear none, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Fantastic.
I'll second that.
Excellent, thanks, Kim. Uh, if I hear no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And then, the final one that we have discussion and action on, uh, policy 8912, restoring biological truth. Um, in, in some opposition to, uh, members of the public that discussed the idea of more than two genders, uh, more than two sexes, and, uh, basically wanting that to be taught in schools. Uh, I, I love the fact that we are staying focused on, on, um, on the, on the subjects that we, uh, our report card initiated. This is basically kind of, uh, an additional way of staying focused on what our report card is trying to move our kids forward with, uh, with the, the areas that they're focused on in the school, English, math, social studies, all the good stuff. So, um, we will fight, I'll open this up to, uh, basically a motion, then we'll have a discussion.
I'll motion to approve the policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on policy 8912?
I agree with what you said, Chris, about that this should go forward, and I don't believe this is a distraction. I think not doing this would be a distraction. So.
Excellent.
I think it brings clarity and consistency to our district by using biologically defined terminology in all of our official documents, so we're in.
Any other thoughts?
I think there's been some interesting, um, pieces, uh, in the literature recently that take a look at the advent of, uh, greater and greater SEL and CRT in the schools. Uh, and the correlation between that, uh, and, um, less academic achievement.
Yeah.
Um, while you can't say that, uh, there's an exact correlation there, it certainly seems coincidental. Um, and so, uh, I tend to agree with the comments that have been made already, that when we, uh, tend to eliminate this as a, a point of conversation and stick to, um, the core, uh, of our academic lessons. Our kids will be the beneficiaries.
And as somebody mentioned, I'm excited to see next year's report card. Um, okay, uh, all in favor of, um, the, uh, the policy 8912, restoring biological truth, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. That's the end of.
We did have 5113 open enrollment.
Oh, okay, oh yeah, thank you.
We're gonna have a little discussion, make sure the board is comfortable approving that policy before we have to make, see determinations in January.
Thank you.
So we got Bob Butler to review that, um, our open enrollment language and the language that he has provided to you. Now there's some slight changes since the policy committee meeting, because we wanted to further clarify that if the board does want to slow down the open enrollment, it's big, so to speak.
Yeah.
Um, the seventh and eighth grade students, if that's where the cutoff would be done, they would be guaranteed a seat here. So that they wouldn't lose out in a random selection process to somebody that didn't even go to one of the feeder schools. The more we talked through with Bob, we identified that as a potential risk if you do a traditional random selection process. Because in the past, there was always more seats were made available than there were kids in the feeders, so no. So nobody ever lost out. But we're assuming once, if you do want to start ratcheting down, we wouldn't open up any more seats than what the number of kids have been identified, which right now we're looking at forty-one students in the feeders eighth grade for next, for this year, coming into ninth grade, so we would open up forty-one seats. They would be guaranteed a seat, and that way they don't run the risk of being kind of booted out after enrolling and attending the feeder by somebody that wasn't that.
So see, for example, like, say if my kid was here for the first three years, but they, you know, you moved out of district to Okanagan Walk. Would they be considered open enrollment for that senior year? Or would they have to go to O'Conan Walk? Does that make sense?
No, help me out.
So, so like.
What grade is the student in currently, you're saying?
Say, 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 say the student is a junior, but not junior here. Resident, but the family moves to O'Conan Walk or something. Would they be part of the, would they have to go to O'Conan Walk based on this new policy, or would they kind of be grandfathered here?
That's a tuition.
That's a tuition, okay.
Yep, so and there's several rules that go into effect.
So that's two different.
Depending on the timing of a move out, they either get the rest of the year. If it's before January, something, I'm not gonna get the exact date right. Then they're guaranteed to see for the rest of that year, and they could apply for open enrollment the following year. If they transfer after a certain date, again, I think it's sometime in January, then they actually get the rest of that year and the entire next year, they can attend under the tuition waiver.
Okay.
And there's also a senior rule that says if you're a twelfth grader, you can stay at the school so you can finish your career.
Okay. Thanks for the.
Those are really good, Kat, and this, this is really just about incoming eighth grade seats, or incoming ninth grade, current eighth grade.
So then, as it's written now, Conrad, are you saying that we don't have to make any adjustments if that's the route we're going with kind of slowing that spigot? Keep it as is?
If the board decides that you want to start ratcheting down open enrollment, then the current language that Bob has provided essentially protects the feeder students. Gives them a seat for as long as the board continues to take them. So the conversation, the board has to have, how many years do you want to keep taking them?
That makes sense.
And that's a big part of the conversation.
So this is gonna be like revisited annually?
No, it, it. Probably not have to. I mean, every year you do look at your open enrollment policy prior to January, just to make sure there's not anything different or anything that you want to tweak. And typically, many districts have no changes for a long time.
Forty is.
We're, we're such a different animal with the union meant idea that we have different feeders, so you have to do things a little bit differently, because they're not just coming from your own, normally in K twelve, your eighth graders all go to the ninth grade, and you figure out your seats are simply here. Especially if you're looking at not offering as many open enrollment seats, then it is a little bit more complicated. The policy does have to be looked at a little bit more closely. I don't think it needs to be changed after this year. Now that Bob's made these changes, I would not say that's a guarantee. You always leave your open in case there would be something that we figure out that needs to be tweaked. My recommendation always is every December, you want to just review your open enrollment policy, just make sure there's nothing that you want to change. January is when you have to establish the seats. So there's two kind of separate things going on. You establish your seats, you have to make sure you do it in alignment with your policy. You can't deviate from that, because then when the state gets an appeal on any decision, if we denied somebody, the state will overrule any district that didn't follow its own policy. That's like the first things that they, technicality, they, nope, nope, that kid can go because you didn't follow your policy. So that's where Bob has given us now the language that we want, that would protect the feeder kids for as long as you want to keep accepting feeder kids. This is really just into the ninth grade is what we're talking about here.
Yeah, okay. And I know we had like two different open enrollments of like special ed students and non-special ed. Do we, do we still do open enrollment for special ed?
That's up to the board. You can't.
Do we?
Can't keep doing it. You can't keep up. I know in the first years I was here, they established a thing with one seat, if I remember. You don't have to do it that way, I don't believe, but you can't keep doing that if you want it. I, I don't know.
I didn't know if like this policy applies to that. So like the special ed students that are in seventh and eighth grade now, are they part of that?
You know what the history, are they always separated into special ed seats and open enrollment?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a big deal, yeah.
And most.
Whatever you would do moving forward for what you would do for the others.
Yeah, most school districts don't open a lot of special ed seats, because they typically have case loads that are already maxed out with their own students, and they generally don't want to add to that burden. And so that's the usual question, there's very few special ed kids that are accepted. I think there was deliberate. The times you're gonna always take at least one?
Some later, I mean, before it was follow a formula, then Tim wanted one seat just because we always had open enrollment seats for regular education. We just did at least one for special education. That being the case, usually that's taken by a resident student at special education anyways. Putting up, the first year we implemented it, we were gonna get booked for a large amount of money, because we didn't have any resident students coming in, and a a child from Milwaukee who had busing in their I E P was applying for open enrollment, decided not to come here for that, but it's a lot of transportation costs. There's a little bit of exposure when you do that, just because you never know.
Okay.
Typically, there's at least one student who's open enrolled in special ed, but again, you never know. But it was serendipitous that it made, we almost had a huge bill on our hands.
So of the current eighth grade students in our feeders, there's forty-one of them. I'm assuming some of those are special ed.
Usually one or two are special.
So they would, they would have a seat, they would have a seat in the forty-one seats that we're establishing.
They would have a seat with us too, because the board also said if you're a resident, then you come. Yeah, so if you're a resident, you automatically come, and you eat our one automatic seat.
Interesting.
So.
So it seems like.
I would, my, my thought there would be is that we, like, it almost whatever happens, what you decide to do with the regular education student school or special education, because otherwise, like.
Yeah.
Running those two disciplines is difficult enough. Most schools separate out special ed and, and regular education if they're gonna accept open enrollment, just because staffing is different. We just happen to have like this one weird caveat rule that was one.
Does the policy, or like reflect that, you know?
The policy, I believe we've looked at it a number of times, but we're, we're, we always, well, we've always had, that's it was open, we've always had one to two seat open for us anyway, so we've never had a huge one. There's no seat. I don't believe that's in there now, but it does give preference to residential students. So if it came up this year, which I don't think it will, that there are zero seats, I think that we would have zero seats. It wanted to.
Yeah, I, I did not look at the policy closely on that specific question. I'm guessing the word in that the policy doesn't require.
It doesn't require. It gives preference to residents.
Right, right. That's usually a yearly vote, right?
Yeah. I brought a determination, how much are we possibly have? We won't run into that probably this year or the next year. I just think that numbers have been steady for us, and I'm starting to get the special education numbers out.
The policy identifies.
Oh, yeah.
January, September, September.
Oh, yeah. Correcting.
I do have a question. In section two, references, it goes into siblings of the current attending students. So is this still saying, like, if you have a sibling at Arrowhead, the remainder kids of that family would be then able to open and roll in? So if there's like a freshman, a seventh grader, and a fourth grader in that family, and right now they're, that freshman is open enrolled in, that seventh grader, and then like that fourth grader would be open rolling if they are open roll at one of our feeders?
The way Bob wrote the language is the siblings would always have preference. I don't believe it's a guarantee.
Okay.
But they would get preference, and the goal typically is to try to keep the families together. So that would just be part of the conversation if the board does want to start ratcheting down. We would want to be in good communication with our families to say, do you have a sibling? And we can do that also with feeder schools, just communicate with them. So that if we know there are siblings, then we would just make sure we open up a seat for each of the siblings, so that then you only have to take those, and then other kids can't win on an appeal.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure that's still the same.
That was the goal.
From the conversation.
But they do have to be a sibling of a currently enrolled Arrowhead student. So if your senior graduates, and you've got a seventh grader, that, that, they're not gonna be guaranteed preference either, because they're, they're not currently a sibling of a student at the school. It doesn't like going perpetually. Once a sibling, always a sibling.
There are any subjectivity in this policy, and are we ever gonna be put in a spot as a board?
Actually, you can't. Okay, yeah, they're, oh, open enrollment system is completely structured so that you can't be subjective. Every student selected has to follow the process, has to be eligible to have a seat for them. And the minute you take one more kid than what you opened up for seats, you now open it up that you'd have to take anybody that applies beyond those original seats you established. And the D P I, whenever there's appeals on decisions about students, the D P I strictly goes by, did you follow your policy? And so you, you, you have to use a random selection process typically, or a waiting list process. So there really isn't room for subjectivity in the process. So you, you can never predict what, what kind of appeals might come. You can have everything done the right way, do everything structured properly, have your policy in place, establish your seats, have your formula. Peoples can still appeal if they get denied. And then it really is up to the D P I that they base that judgment on. We, we say, here's our policy, here's what we made a decision, and they say yes or no. The only time I've ever heard somebody losing is when they didn't follow their policy, and you made an exception. Once you do that, you're gonna lose all the appeals.
So this really is still just for process. Bob, refine the process. We're gonna vote on the next piece next time.
The seats will be in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we talked a little bit about wanting to start the conversation publicly at, at this meeting. How does the board feel about ratcheting down open enrollment as we go forward? We, we should probably start talking about that. Doesn't have to make a decision tonight. Seats are determined for next year. That would probably be a logical time if the board was to make a statement and say, we just want everybody to know for the next however many years, we'll, we'll continue to accept incoming feeder kids, but at a certain point, we're not going to anymore. I mean, you don't have to do that January, but the, the longer you wait to clarify that, the more people are kind of left out in limbo, and they're wondering, and even the conversation will have people getting upset and all that sort of things. I, I would say it's better to be definitive. Make a decision and communicate it as soon as possible. So if you're not ready in January, starting to, can still do it in February, can do it in March, I just. I wouldn't navigate to people as long as.
Certainly makes sense.
Okay. Any other questions with regards to this change, just for the process, just for this policy?
And I guess just for the record, we should publicly then just state that the idea of being considered is if we can get to a lower enrollment at Arrowhead, we don't need as big of an addition to North Campus if we're gonna continue to go to community and try to get everybody under one roof. In the interest of safety and the interest of better efficiency, which is better spirit. The taxpayers would benefit by us asking for a smaller building, smaller renovation. And that, the goal is to get the taxpayer support, something that could make was to eliminate all those redundancies and have safer one school environment.
I thought this is two separate, I, I mean, yes, it comes to your strategy, but at the point, at this point right now, those are two separate items. Right?
They're, they're absolutely related. The rationale for why the board would stop taking open enrollment is something you need to be transparent about, and just needs to be out there. We're gonna wanna know what, what you're thinking, why are you doing that? So the desire, when I talked to Kim weeks ago, it was make sure that this meeting, we start the conversation, so at least there, publicly, you can honestly say to people, we started, we started talking about the committee meeting. It last week, now we've had some.
Absolutely, yes. And, and if I can just chime in, I, I think that last sentence was the critical one. This is really stemming from conversations that we've had in, in various committee meetings over the last couple of months. Just trying to find solutions to, you know, what our long-term facilities problem is. And so, you know, we have kind of centered on the possibility of, you know, bringing down our total school membership. If we were to do that, we could, you know, consolidate into one facility much more easily with much more minor modifications to a school, a potentially much smaller referendum ask if we were to go in that direction. And so all these things work towards that, albeit the board is not being asked to make that decision right now. So this, this, this policy update that Bob Butler wrote is really just, it allows us to have something intact as we make, as we make an open enrollment decision by law at the January meeting. So this is in our back pocket, we'll be consistent as, as Conrad said, we'll be consistent with our policy design as we move forward with our open enrollment strategy.
Yeah, the key is establishing the seats every year, that is a standalone item. Of itself, like, every, separate from the policy, the policy is what you follow, we establish everything, but establishing the seats goes on every year. The issue for the board is if down the road, you're gonna say no more, that can't be a shock to people. You can't just current, let's just use the two-year idea, if the current seventh and eighth graders are allowed to come here, and then after that, it's not. Those sixth graders need to know now, I would argue, as soon as possible, so those families can plan. You would not want them to be halfway through their seventh, eighth grade year, suddenly the board, well, now we finally made the decision. And you could do that. I mean, it's not illegal, but I just don't think that's a, the right way to treat anybody. And as a board, I just feel like you'd want to make that decision so everybody knows, and everybody can plan. The, the, the challenge for the board is when do you want to say that cutoff would be? What information do you need from us so that you can make that decision as quickly as possible? We can share you the enrollment data, we can bring that forward, we can let you see where the non-resident enrollment is currently in those feeders, if that helps. Bring that to the next meeting, or to the committee meeting before the next meeting. Anything else that you're thinking of that would help?
Yeah, this really sets the table.
Yeah. And clearly, our facilities issues aren't changing. Certainly, the financial issues are likely not gonna turn around. Budgetary problems are not gonna be solved like that, so at least this starts moving some things in the direction of addressing, you know, what what can we do?
Just a lot.
Same thing with talking to Village of Hart, London, and actually annexing the school. So, I mean, it's just looking at a few different ways to address our ongoing issues.
Yeah. Yeah, and thanks for publicly, publicly stating really the, the impetus for this, both Conrad and Kim. Because I think that needs to be on the record, so that, that's helpful for anybody that might come back to this and want to understand it better.
And do any board members have any concerns or reservations about this concept? That would be good for us to know, if there's stuff we can help you find, do some research.
I can't, from a North Lake perspective, I know the superintendent has spoken to me about it, and is very, is concerned in the direction. I don't represent North Lake School, their board does, and so I, I would welcome them to share their thoughts, but what kind of conversations have been happening with superintendents so that are they aware of this conversation? And have they provided their feedback? Is there a chance or opportunity for us to get their feedback, to understand where they're coming from? Because I know, for instance, North Lake does heavily rely on open enrollment. This will impact them. My child goes to North Lake, she's not open enrolled, but I love that school, because it's a great school. And so it's just the North Lake seed, I just wanna be a guy, give them enough time, understand their concerns. Be able to work together to, to help, you know, build a bridge of understanding.
Yeah, at least a month or two ago, I mentioned to them at a meeting that this was a concept, just hoping the board hadn't done anything, there's been no action, nothing formal, but I just mentioned it as an idea. Two, two of them said they had already started ratcheting down open enrollment at their districts, and then the other ones were kind of just quiet on it, and I, but definitely at least two of them would, there could be an impact. That's the hard part, like, I don't know for sure if there would be an impact or not.
Sure.
You know, I don't know what families' plans would be. One impact could be that more people move into the district, and maybe enrollment, now you have resident students, which is better than not resident. Maybe they continue to send their students to the feeder, but then they know when high school comes, they're gonna have to choose a different high school, and so it doesn't impact them at all. Maybe a bunch of them say, I'm not gonna send my kid to that feeder anymore, because I wanna send him to a place where I know they can get into that high school. We just don't know. And those are just three responses off the top of my head. But as much as the board wants, we can get not a problem. I, I, you can kind of predict what some of the feedback may be.
I just wanna make sure that we're incorporating it when we make our decisions, because as weird as it is, you know, we're a union school, but yet their kids come to us and. as weird as it is, you know, we're a union school, but yet their kids come to us and we are a community. So I just wanna make sure that.
That's what's so hard about it. Because this is definitely, from an admin perspective, this makes total sense for Arrowhead kids. And it's very logical, very defensible, and it's still no guarantee. We don't know that we'll still be able to pass something just that had a smaller number. But it's, I don't know what other option there is. It's like we're kinda running out. So when you're not a K-12, everything's so much more complicated. I don't, it's a weird thing, like, what is the role of the feeder in a conversation like this?
I know, at the end of the day, we have to worry about Arrowhead and what is best for Arrowhead. And so, but it's the intricacies of the relationships that.
My conversations with Lisa have been very good, very upfront, very professional, she knows, we get it. Any K-12 district, I don't know how many K-12s, that schools use open enrollment as much as some of our feeders are using. I think it's also part of that function of being a standalone that, and I don't wanna say it's an overreliance, because it's just whatever they're deciding to do is what they wanna do. But it's kind of unusual to see schools where a super high percentage of the kids are not residents. And a couple of ours have pretty high percentages that are not residents.
Yeah, and that's one thing I don't know, like, with Northlake, I don't know if it's, you know, people that live in the town of, or the Village of Martin that are now going to, you know what I mean? So it's like, I don't know the intricacies, but I just wanna.
We broke it down by non-residents, is the ones that matter. Because you could be open enrollment at a feeder and be a resident of Arrowhead still, there's quite a bit of that across the difference. But the ones that matter to us is how many of them are actually non-residents.
Sure, yeah, that would be really interesting to see.
We'll get that for you.
Yeah, that is planned for presentation in January.
Good, thank you.
I don't know what committee, because we're not actually changing policy, it could be part of the policy conversation, because it's related, I think. I don't know that there's a better, yeah, we can do that for sure.
When will we have the size impact, cost impact?
We are working. And there's a meeting on next week, Monday. We're having a meeting on Monday, Brandon, so we'll know more then. I don't know for sure if we'll have numbers that quickly, but it won't be very long after that, because they're doing things on a square foot basis primarily. Heavy remodel, light remodel, those formulas that they did their last thing for, so we should know more. Definitely after the break. If we find out something more on Monday, I'll put it in the update next week.
Or even B and G on Tuesday.
True.
Because we're talking about comparable classrooms anyways.
Depending on how much we learn, yeah, we'll give you an update either way on how that went.
So that's being positioned for January, correct? Like, the opening enrollment numbers and everything?
The seats have to be established at the January board meeting for open enrollment seats. This policy, we gotta approve the rule. Did we take that shot?
No, not yet.
That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, a lot of discussion, discussion.
The policy gets approved tonight, and that's, we don't have to do anything more on policy side of it, but we do have to establish the seats. And the big issue again is the board kinda has to decide what's the plan. Because that's gotta be communicated out to the parents of the.
Like, it's more advanced, I feel better personally as a person.
So, and we can vote on the policy tonight and then get the data on the numbers of open enrollment. And then in January, we can decide, do we wanna move and trigger this year on this? Or do we wanna look at the 2028, 29 school year? Like, we can figure out what year we wanna do after that, once we get more of the data to pass.
Yeah, I think I'm following you, Lynn. You have to establish the seats for next year at the January meeting. So that decision has to be made, and that's the only difference than what we've been doing in the past is we posted enough seats for the incoming eighth graders plus, but there was a big cushion. And then, like, we didn't even have those all filled. I remember it was like 10 under, before we posted, something like that.
There was a lot of extra seats.
Yeah, whereas other years, we got much closer to the number that we opened. This year, we would be suggesting, don't open up any more than the 41 seats for the currently enrolled eighth grade students. And so that right there is a bit of a change. And the board may say, we don't wanna do that, but then it delays getting the number down. And I guess we would need to know that fairly soon, because that was the plan for the numbers that we were gonna bring to you. And if you say you'd rather have more, then we have to look at a different rationale for how we establish the seats. Because that's usually based on some kind of formula, for how many students do you have in your current class enrollment and that sort of.
So we have a meeting on the 6th, it's the policy personal legislation meeting. Should we talk about it again? And then we will know what we're bringing to the 14th. So the committee meeting and then another, we'll talk about that.
So we'll talk about the non-residents.
In committee, before it goes to board.
There's still a lot of variables. I mean, we have the financial analysis, Jeff, on what the 41 means versus where we're at now.
Yeah, we're about 60, and so it's a difference of about 20 or so. We're already having the conversations on what it looks like to downsize our curriculum and combine classes and staffing and sharing spaces. And we've already started to talk about that in case it happens, because that's gonna be a big project.
There's a lot to discuss.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you guys are closer to it. Yeah, but what we know what we have to do, and that, none of those decisions can be made between now and January. Like, those are the, once the decision is made, then we can start planning what is it gonna look like? But there are so many variables to your point, you just, you don't know, because every resignation now, every retirement creates an opportunity to say, what can we do here? What can we do differently? What can we do creatively? What can we combine? What can we eliminate? So, and there's just no way to predict what those are gonna look like. But I've been a part of downsizing for years, other administrators on our team have done it for years, and districts are doing it all over the state. Washington, North Carolina, it's doing it, Oshkosh is doing it, the list goes on and on. Everybody is dealing with the declining enrollment situation, so we're not. This is just a more of a unique approach, where you're saying we're not gonna use open enrollment anymore to kind of keep our enrollment artificially.
I tend to think that the earlier the board can reach a decision on whether we're gonna take this approach or not, i.e. January, the better off it is. I think, you know, as Conrad said, there is a real need for transparency around this. And it's not only just transparency in our community and our families setting sites on Arrowhead. It does have the downstream impact, I think, on our K-8s. And the family's making the same decisions around attendance at K-8s and as K-8s, potentially. And I think, Lynn, you're particularly privy to a conversation, I think, that happened last night out of Lake Country. It looks like there is a much more imminent referendum, you know, looming in their future. So things start becoming a bit impactful to some of the other feeder schools that are part of our union and the decisions that the parents would make, you know, elsewhere. So, you know, again, I think the earlier we can arrive at a good decision here and start communicating the rationale for our decision, the better off everyone is gonna be.
And I, well said, Kim. I think the impetus for just this policy for tonight, just the policy for tonight, if I could pull that out of everything, is does the board agree that we wanna potentially, then this is just potentially, have the tool in the toolbox to be able to say, we wanna only use, only have district kids and no open enrollment kids? Do we wanna have that as a potential tool? This doesn't tie us to anything like that, it just gives us that ability. Am I stating that correctly? So I think that's all we're trying to vote on with regards to this policy tonight. I know there's more to come, there's work that administration's doing, there's other things that we have to know in January. But just for this policy with regards to the discussion and action for tonight, it's just, do we want this as a tool?
Yeah, and then how many years till?
Yes, and we can figure that out later, yep, yep. That's the goal. We'll see.
I mean, no, because all we're doing in January is starting a kind of a, it's almost easing into it, I would say. But all we're doing is just accepting the current eighth graders, which that's not a big change in fact. We've always been taking eighth grade kids, we're just not taking kind of extra ones this time around. The real decision is down the road, when do you say no more seats? That decision is, has to be made a couple of years in advance. So it can be communicated in advance, but you don't actually stop taking those kids for however years you decide.
And it really has nothing to do with this tonight.
And so that's to Kim's point, the sooner you make that decision, I do think that's the right move. But tonight, we just need to get this policy approved, so that's in place for January. And then between now and that, we can continue to clarify, get your data, answer some questions, and hopefully can make an informed decision in January.
So I'd be in support of the policy, but there'd be a few things that I'd wanna know before January. I don't wanna show up in January and then have to start going down the road. I do agree with you, I think that having the tool in our toolbox to be able to choose that if we decide to, I think is good. So I would suggest to my fellow members to approve the policy change. But I would like to see more preparation before we start to consider the conversation of closing the doors. I, all I've heard is that this might be a good avenue for a reduced referendum. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. I wanna see the data on, all right, how does this impact the current budget? If we start cutting out 40, 60 people, is that with the, I'm gonna throw a line and hope to catch a fish of a referendum? And it's better for that, or is it actually better for us today if the referendum doesn't go through? So I also wanna know, like you were talking about, how many current students are enrolled in our feeders that are out of district total? And I think you said it's 41, is that true roughly?
So there's 41 eighth graders.
41 eighth graders, so. There's a spill-down effect too. There's 41 eighth graders, but how many of them have sixth grade, fifth grade, third grade brothers and sisters? Are we allowing that? The feeders, if people don't know, I mean, you should, Eric talked about it, but the feeders are really strong. They're some of the top 10 in the state. So there's a reason people are open enrolling there as well, with the hopes that are coming to Arrowhead. How many do we get? I don't know, do we know the number of people that open and roll to Arrowhead that didn't come from the district? Is that the 20th, or is there a big number of that? There's about 60 or 65 total from last year, were freshmen. And I don't know what last year's, but we don't have the numbers of last year's. That were. Like, the 41, that didn't come from feeders, I guess. But I would guess if we're using 41 as our number for next year, if that was the same this year, then we're talking 20 to 20. So there's only about 20-ish that are coming just to Arrowhead, not through the feeders.
And that may be a little high.
Yeah, I would say it is high.
It's probably closer to 10, 15, I guess.
So again, maybe I'm missing something, if I am. The number of open enrollment that are out of district is between 40 to 60, 40 that are currently eighth grade, another 20-ish.
Per class, that's per class. So if you figure there's four classes, that's at least 160 kids, if you're using 40 as your average, 40 to 60. So, you know, that's.
Right now, we're like, I think we're on 250.
Yeah.
250, yeah.
Total, total. Yeah, so you can't, you can't just micro, yeah.
Well, the number, the number's going down just through the decline in overall numbers too. So, because like, if this was the year that we didn't even fill all the seats that we established, or that it's just a bunch of the overall decline.
Yeah, so for me, for that future discussion, I'd wanna see more, what does the financial part of it look like? Is it a better net sum game for us to limit those seats? Or does it, or is it just hedging our bet on a lower cost improved referendum for one building? I don't, I don't know, I'd like to see that. And the, with the feeders being as strong as they are, again, swallowed, number one in the state, others, top 10. These are destination districts, and so a lot of people that wanna come in, and the more notice we can give, the better. Might be tough, I don't know. If you've got a family that, we say two years, they've got two or three kids lower than that.
Yeah, and that's really a future discussion, you know, right? That's really a future discussion, really has nothing to do with tonight. Tonight is basically just getting.
Correct for the post, but the thought process was.
Right, sure, sure. Absolutely. And maybe January's advent, and maybe that's too quick to move that, all those pieces forward. But, I mean, this is basically just to open, to put the tool in the toolbox. That's all we're doing tonight.
And like I said, I support the tool. But if we're gonna have these other discussions about, say, Conrad was saying earlier, is that the sooner that we communicate to the public that this change would be forthcoming, would be the better. So the families. So our, we need to start starting down. Well, I wanna have this conversation tonight, so that we can prepare, have the information, and then have the intelligent fact and strategy-based conversation in January. If we don't have it tonight, we just push through the policy and then show up in January, we're either gonna push it, or we're gonna make a decision that's not relevant.
And that's why I was asking, would it be more of a better thing to, like, vote on the policy, put that into place? And have it not be January of 2026 is like the final vote of how many it is? But do we have conversations in January of 2026, and maybe February, March? And then we have on record that when we go into January of 2027, this is what the future of it's gonna look like? And then we vote on that part then, but then there's at least more discussion around it. And data, and then we can also continue to educate the public on whatever route we decide to take. Instead of something that's gotta be done in a month.
Yeah, like, I'd love to see how many kids in the feeders are non-residents outside of eighth grade, like, through the whole thing, K through. I'd love to see how many are that might have the intention of coming. Love to see what that number is. Cut that off, how many of them would stay? I think some would stay. I think some would stay because the feeders are so strong. I don't think they'd just have a mass exodus. Because if Northlake is a good school and these other ones are good schools, I don't think they're just gonna mass exodus with maybe not being able to come to Arrowhead, because they are very good schools. But they do run the risk of that. So at least having the data would give us more information. I'm not saying that that's the end-all rationale, I go with yes or no, but I think it's good data now.
I just wanna interject, just to qualify, kind of arising from a statement that Mr. Adsett just made with regards to the rationale for open enrollment is that it brings down the cost of a potential referendum in the future. And yes, it does that. But certainly, I just wanna point out and really reinforce that our board has been extremely thoughtful on the many, many factors that go into the why behind a referendum. And certainly, cost is a huge one, however. We've always given great consideration to the prospects of consolidating into one building and what the impact would have on the school culture. And I think that would be tremendous. We've also given great consideration to the prospects of getting into one building and the great impact that would have in alleviating the safety and security concerns that have been longstanding at our school. And so just to qualify, that this potential strategy towards a change in the open enrollment strategy as it relates to a possible future referendum, that it's multifaceted. It's just not financial, it really is our board's concern over what's the best interest for our kids. It's all about the kids.
Well, I'm assuming that you guys got some good feedback on that to bring forth to the next discussion. Any other discussions on anything to do with this before we vote with regards to just the changes on this policy?
May we open it up, Conrad, that if board members between now and January meetings come up with additional information that they would like to have supplied to them? That's just not popping into our minds right now. You know, there's certainly a lot of questions and a lot of good questions coming from our board members. But perhaps after we leave, we'll be able to define our needs a little bit more. Are you open to the board members emailing requests around additional information?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay. If I hear no further discussion on policy fifty-one thirteen, uh, with regards to the open enrollment, uh, tweak from Bob Butler. I'd like to open the floor to a motion.
A motion to approve the policy five one one three as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. As unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for that discussion. I know there's a lot, lot to digest there. Um, and then we're going to move to Wasby. I'm going to turn this over to Kim because she has a lot to share with regards to this.
Um, well, I, I just wanted to, uh, kind of point everyone in the direction of the finalized resolutions, uh, that, uh, will be, uh, taken to the vote at the General Assembly of the State Convention, uh, the latter part of January. Um, of course, um, uh, Member Blaget will be our delegate there in, in, in voting, uh, the conscience of the board. Uh, and, uh, just wanted to allow opportunity at this meeting, if there were any questions relative to those resolutions. Um, now would be a good time rather than the January meeting. Um, and, um, I, I did ask, um, uh, Jeff Gross if he wouldn't mind providing some definition uh, to the topic of decoupling, because obviously this is, it, it's a very unusual thing frankly for uh, P N R out of Wasby to come up with a resolution that actually presents, uh, both opposition and support of the same issue. And so it is a, it is a, an interesting and somewhat complicated issue. And I'm, I'm, um, and I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, uh, to go into a little, little bit more detail.
So decoupling. They're referring to private school vouchers and how they're paid for. So today, I talk about it every year at the annual meeting. We spend about a half million dollars, or we tax a half million dollars, I should say. Um, to pay for private school vouchers. So we have revenue limit authority for an extra half million dollars. And then the state pulls away a half million dollars from our state aid. So it's a direct tax to our taxpayers to pay for those private school vouchers. That's the way it happens today. Decoupling, there was a proposal in twenty twenty-four from both the Assembly and the Senate to, uh, change this and make that funding happen directly from the state through the general purpose revenue that they have. General purpose revenue is to, used to support all things statewide, right? So they provide school aids through general purpose revenue, which is the largest portion. If you pulled this out of that, that's a separate bucket now that would have to be funded through the state general purpose revenue. Along with corrections and roads and everything else. So what it would do is it would actually make it less transparent on what we're spending for private school vouchers. It would also have, uh, state income taxes that go in to pay for that general purpose revenue items. Someone who doesn't have any private schools in their area would still be paying for private school vouchers. But right now it happens within the local municipalities. So initially districts were saying, why should this funnel through us? Right? So that was the, um, the, the, the group that wants to keep it as, or, or change it to do the decoupling. And then as, um, Wasbo, um, the research director did some research on this um, and looked at what other states are doing, where it is coming out of general purpose revenue. It caused a major increase in the expansion of private school vouchers and they didn't account for the cost of it. So now you have competing interests, you know, are we going to pay for private school vouchers? Or we're going to pay for public, public school funding? And they're competing against each other. The private school vouchers, one state, um. My computer's about to die here. But, uh, one state where was, thank you. Here it is. They estimated that going to, this is Arizona, um, universal vouchers. So anyone, there, there's, you know, a voucher in every kid. Okay. So they asked me that to cost them ninety-seven million dollars. It turned out to cost them seven hundred and thirty-eight. They were a little off on their ass.
Is that because that was a catalyst?
That was in year one.
Was that a catalyst for people to decide that they wanted to go to private school then?
Right. Yeah, that was. Yeah. And right now we know in the state of Wisconsin, ninety-five percent of the kids that get a voucher were already planning, or, or were already previously, previously enrolled in a private school. So now we're, so the argument has been made that, um, these vouchers, you know, voucher schools will actually cost less to the taxpayers overall. But if, if ninety-five percent of the students that are getting a voucher were already enrolled in that and now we're going to give them a voucher to go, that's actually going to increase the cost, isn't it?
This is doubling. This is like, they're getting dou, is it doubling the money?
No, it'll just pay for the schooling rather than the parents that are already.
They don't pay for the tuition to use the.
The voucher, correct.
Right. So ninety-five percent of them were already paying it out of their own pocket.
Okay.
And now the voucher would come in and, and pay for that for them. But they, they weren't attending public schools anyway.
Yeah.
Ninety, right? Five percent were attending public schools prior. So it, it's not going to decrease the cost and it's going to increase the cost a lot. And the other thing that's happening is there's a ten percent cap within Arrowhead. Only ten percent of our student, um, enrollment is allowed to have a voucher for this year yet. Next year that cap goes away. So that was ramped up one percent each year, eight percent, nine percent. This year it's ten percent and then next year it's in the law that it goes away. That there is no cap. Now, we haven't hit our ten percent yet, but we know it was five hundred and twenty-six thousand last year. This year it's five hundred and seventy thousand, about a fifty thousand dollar increase. And it's been, I remember just three or four years ago, our cost was fifty thousand dollars on this. And now we're at five hundred thousand. And so if you take this transparency, you know, so now school districts are talking about this, right? Every year I say it at the annual meeting and it's, it's clear to those that listen, or we had two people at our annual meeting. So they heard that we're paying this half million dollars out of, you know, taxpayers are directly paying for these vouchers. You take that out of the mix and it runs through general purpose revenues. It competes with, competes with public school funding. We know the cost of vouchers is going to increase. We don't know where that money's going to come from. There's not a will to increase taxes, right? The will is to decrease taxes, but we know this is going to, this program will cost more in the end. So there's just really not good reason to change the way it is. We want this to be transparent. In fact, we'd like to do like Green Bay School District was allowed, you know, just able to work out with their municipality. They have one, I believe. Um, they put it on their property tax bills, how much of this private school vouchers is costing them on a tax bill. We'd have to get all eleven of our municipalities to, to work with us to, to put that on there. I don't know if that'd be a difficult task, but they have one large district, the city of Green Bay, and they put it on their tax bills this year. And that's what some of the transparency we've been looking for.
Right.
Um, but you, if we decouple this, we're going to lose that transparency. The costs statewide are going to go up and income taxpayers who don't even have private schools in their area are going to be paying for something that isn't. No. It's not even in their area. So there's no benefit to that. So, uh, I would, uh, support to decouple and have it keep it as is.
Not that we support how it is as is.
It's, it's, it's really crazy. Um, Wisconsin spends six hundred and twenty-nine million dollars on voucher programs. Voucher programs, special need, um, scholarship program. So, um, the K eight vouchers, the nine twelve vouchers and the special needs scholarship program, six hundred and twenty-nine million. And that, that serves fifty-eight thousand, six hundred kids, fifty-nine thousand kids, right? Six hundred and twenty-nine million. State of Wisconsin also spends only five hundred and seventy-five million, right? Less than six hundred and twenty-nine million on our special ed kids. And there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand of those. So we've spent five seventy-five million on a hundred and twenty-seven thousand special ed kids in Wisconsin. But we spent six hundred and twenty-nine million on fifty-eight thousand voucher kids. Voucher funding and, and the proponents are pushing this to expand this and make this, you know, a bigger spend item at the state level. And if it's decoupled, it'll slide through very easily and nobody will be talking about this. So, and remember just a few years ago, um, the twenty-three, twenty-five annual budget, when vouchers got a three thousand, four hundred dollar increase per student, bringing them up to twelve thousand, seven hundred. We were back at eleven thousand. So a voucher kid would get twelve thousand, seven hundred. Arrowhead kids would get eleven thousand, seven hundred. Voucher kids get a thousand dollars more. So they increased them by over three grand. Well, we got the three hundred and twenty-five dollar increase that year. So anytime that public school funding goes up, voucher funding is tied to that increase. So if the, at the floor, remember the floor went up, uh, on revenue limit, yeah, uh, by a thousand dollars. That was part of that three thousand dollar increase because they got that thousand dollar increase, even though most districts didn't get the thousand dollars. Even us, we got a hundred and twenty-five dollars up a thousand dollars, right? Because we were, oh, we were only a hundred and twenty-five dollars away from eleven thousand. So we didn't get the full thousand, but the vouchers got the full thousand. And if the vouchers get more money, it doesn't work in the reverse. So the public schools don't get more money. It's the way it's set up today. So decoupling this would further height it and make it very much, very less, a lot less transparent. And, uh, I don't think it's a good thing for the state of Wisconsin.
I, I would watch it. That's a lot.
I had sixty slides I was going to share.
You could send them because this is really complicated and I feel like in some way, shape or form, public schools always get like, ah, we're spending too much more, blah, 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 but we're not, we're not getting any money like as much as we need. So if we, we, so we're in support of opposing the decoupling, the public and private school funding. But that's Wasby. What is that? What is that called? The word called lobbying. Wasby would be lobbying for that or is the legislation going to, like, Wasby doesn't own this, right? Or?
No.
Is, right, correct. So this is just what they're going to go. So we don't need, so we can say, and we can all be a part of this, but at the end of the day, it's the state that's going to.
Yeah.
Well, let's hang on a prayer here that Wasby.
So pay attention to any bills coming through.
Yeah.
The Assembly and the Senate.
Yeah.
Watch closely and, and talk to your legislators.
What's the appetite for this in Madison, you know?
It's fascinating.
They tried it in twenty twenty-four, didn't pass. But it's going to come back.
So you can put in on the search engine on the states, if there's any words that you want to have automatically emailed to you anytime it's in a bill. And so you get, um, notified as soon as there's language that's introduced. A rock, so you can put in decoupling. Now, I don't know how many other things decoupling has other than this. But as I say, you can actually get those type of updates.
I'm going to put in the, it's Friday.
Okay.
A link to this article that's even better than the slides.
Oh, good.
It says everything the slides do and a narrative.
No. From what I understand, perfect.
It's just an awesome article.
More articulate.
It will tell you all this. Arizona, when they guessed ninety-seven million, it came up to seven thirty-eight. The following year was a billion dollars. They now have a one point four billion dollar deficit at the state level. Largely because of vouchers, universal vouchers. Everyone gets a voucher in their backpack.
How many other states besides Arizona have done this? Do you know?
Um, Florida is another one. They drew, uh, three point nine billion in state funds in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which is double what it was three years prior. And they had a state surplus that is now projecting to be a six point nine billion dollar deficit. Goes crazy if you allow it, if you don't put those caps on. So we have some caps in there, but they're going away. And it's a little scary because now you're pulling, and we already don't have a lot of public school funding, but now you've got another pot that you'd be pulling from against, you know, pulling from each other. So the state of Wisconsin is the third highest percentage of kids that are getting vouchers already. It's nice Florida and Arizona. So like really these caps go up.
Oh, it's. Percentage of that though is Milwaukee.
Uh, I don't know.
I would bet probably happy.
But it does hit, uh.
I was going to say that too, Milwaukee and Mass.
I want to say like three hundred and eighty-five or three hundred and eighty-three districts of the four hundred and twenty-one do have voucher expenses.
True.
So I'm, I'm in here, Milwaukee. I'm like, really? That was the original, um, this outline actually has a, a timeline of how this all began, you know, with, with Milwaukee's choice program. And then it became the Racine uh, choice program. And then it became the Wisconsin choice program.
Do you know how bad it failed in twenty-four?
But.
Jeff, yeah, thank you. Thank you for adding a lot of clarity here. Um, from a Wasby perspective, yes, the resolutions really just inform the lobbying efforts, uh, the lobby arm. Um, this decoupling, uh, is in its second year and, and being brought to the policy and resolutions group. Um, my guess is, uh, it, it, it certainly might come back depending on what kind of crazy outcome happens in January. It would seem like it would be decided. Uh, but what I can say is that this, the whole, um, topic of decoupling seemed generally misunderstood uh, by, uh, the, the people involved in the policy and resolutions committee. And so it is really very concerning. This will go to a delegate vote in January, um, where potentially people, um, aren't, um, fully informed on how to vote.
Yeah, I'm surprised to see Kettle Marine, like the rationale to support from Kettle Marine.
That, that's why I, I thought it was good for Jeff to clarify because I, I think we all have a, a preconceived notion of what type of resolutions would come out of KM.
Yeah.
So I, I thought it would, uh, warrant some, just a little better understanding. Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Really appreciate it.
Kettle Marine, by the way, two point six million dollars is what they levy for taxes for, to pay for these vouchers. I mean, their larger, larger budget, their budget's about, uh, fifty million, ours is thirty. But two, two point six million. There's a nice map out there on the D P I website that shows how many voucher students from each district. So you asked about Milwaukee. Let's check.
Say no.
Just say no.
How do we find a vote on the other proposals?
I believe last year it was one of those that if people had reservations or had topics that you wanted me to do, we could go forward. That's I believe what Ken did last year. Um, if anyone has anything, if you want, this is necessarily needs to spend the time now. I can either bring it to the next board meeting or committee meeting in January because we don't have a meeting until the end of the month. Or, uh, I can put something forward if that makes sense.
It's typically been.
I think we reviewed this at the board meeting in January last year.
Yeah, just knowing that the January board meeting probably had a, a, a little bit more on the agenda. Uh, but it was possible to kind of cover this this evening. Uh, you know, I, I thought it would make sense.
But we do have a vote on all of these, the assembly votes.
From my understanding, yes, Kim has typically been otherwise the delegate in the past. So Kim, um, we have a vote on each one of these, how we want to vote, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And so in, in the past, what we have done is just made sure that everyone on the board, um, was armed with what the resolution packet looked like. You know, what was, you know, contained in there? And if they had any particular concerns about any. And if they had any particular concerns about any given resolution and what the possible vote would be through our delegate, uh, that they would, you know, bring those questions or concerns forward. Uh, otherwise, uh, you know, it is uh, it is kind of Lynn's uh, charge as delegate uh, to uh, be representative of our board as she votes.
If you'd like, we could put together a shared Google Doc that has all of the resolutions on it, and then board members could like have their own column to weigh in if they want to do that, if you want to try that.
Be awesome.
I can volunteer, Kate.
To represent her as a delegate.
Well, I will not be voting for state covered meals for everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Generally speaking, they're they're pretty straightforward. And I think um,
Yeah.
I I have a lot of confidence in Lynn that she would uh, she would be truly representative of our board.
But if someone feels strongly, please feel free to reach out.
I think you'll do a great job.
Yeah, yeah.
We've we've come a long ways. Uh, you know, when I joined the board, you know, uh, four years ago, I I don't, I don't think the board ever really even talked about uh, this. You know, for for uh, a while it was discussed. So I I think it's uh, something that we should be doing. Uh, but again, it it is also the charge of the delegate being there to um, vote representatively.
Excellent. Okay, Kim, refresh my memory from last year, but I think if I'm not mistaken, the the Wasby resolution booklet, just so that people understand, these these are not the only twelve that the lobby lobbyists will be advocating for. It is a massive book filled with resolutions, filled that they then lobby for. So the legislators, they will review it, but it's just a big book of a lot of resolutions. They're going to, what they think their constituents want them to do.
That's true.
It it's a, it's a large book. This this one thing, I mean, decoupling might have a bigger visibility, like Jeff said, because it was already in front of them. But a lot of the efforts, a lot of the resolutions, and Kim, correct me again if I'm wrong, there are resolutions that are brought up by districts not even noticing that a similar or the same resolution already exists in the Wasby book. That they're bringing to Wasby after they pass. So then in the Policy Resolutions Committee, we'll just say, uh, we'll reject that one because there's already one like that. It's called fifty three twelve.
No, that's that's very, very accurate. Yeah. Thanks for 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 volunteering that, Chris. It, you know, it is, it's a big, big book of resolutions. And basically what we were told uh, through, you know, the the Wasby lobbyists is that um, they kind of wait uh, when there's a a bill coming forward around any uh, that that, you know, kind of uh, bumps up against any of the resolutions. And that's when they kind of kick into gear. So the some of the resolutions can rest in the big book for a year, a year and a half uh, before they're really even ever addressed through their government relations, folks. Um, it just depends on timing.
All right. Thanks, Kim. Anything else?
Thank you.
That wraps it up. Okay. All right. Moving on to CISA.
I have nothing.
Nope.
Sorry.
Fantastic. New business? Or future agenda items? Okay, if I hear none, um, motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute ninety nineteen point eighty five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Take a five minute hiatus?
We don't need lifting stuff.
What?